Okay, welcome to those members of the public staff that we have with us for this Zoom meeting and also a public meeting. And it's a combination of the planning commissions of both the Upper Valley and the Western Weber County Planning Commission we have with us today, the chairs for both those planning commissions. And I'm assuming we have a number of the planning commission members online. It's August 4th, 5:00 PM. Commissioner Gage-Fror, I'll be calling to order. This meeting, to my right is Commissioner Jim Harvey, left is Commissioner Scott Jenkins. We are here to basically hear the information presented. And I want to thank our planning commission for scheduling this and the planning commissioners for taking time out of their day to address this issue that has been on the agenda for a good period of time and finally bringing this to public view as we move forward. Let me just give a little bit of background information so we know kind of what the ground rules are. Again, this is a Zoom meeting. Anybody that had comments, they were required and have put those comments into a database as of 12 noon yesterday. I believe that we'll be reviewing those. We will not be receiving any verbal or public comments at this meeting. Needless to say, this is the first in a series of meetings as we discuss this issue. There'll be at least a planning commission meeting, a hearing on this for both planning commissions, and then an additional hearing at the planning commission at some point in time. So don't feel that this is the last opportunity. This is actually the first opportunity to have this discussion. We've had a number of comments made, phone calls, and over the past couple of weeks as this has come to the surface. And in working with our planning commissioners, we felt this would be a good start to the public process. Let me just remind everybody, again, we'll be following state statute as we're required to do. And as we all know, under state law passed in 2017, HB 253, did not give the counties the ability to ban nightly rentals. So we've had a number of comments that have requested that we ban nightly rentals under HB 253 passed. That cannot happen under state law. What it does give the county the ability to do is to make enforcement and set policy and regulation. That's the direction that we intend to follow.
I can't hear you.
So you can't, you're not coming through? I'm not coming through? You know what that is, Charlie?
Yeah, we've lost you, Gage.
All right, we've got technical difficulties?
Yeah, we've got no audio.
Hold on a second. All right, can you hear me now?
Let Bill go to the back room just a minute.
Testing. Have I got audio, Charlie?
It doesn't look like it. We're trying to resolve it right now.
Hold on. Let's make sure we have audio so nobody...
We can hear you now.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
All right, let me just, sorry about that. Let me just back up a second. And we started with the basic ground rules that we're not going to allow any verbal public comments. Those were submitted yesterday at noon. We will be reviewing those. This is a first in the series of some hearings we'll be having. The number of comments, both in writing and verbally, have asked us as commissioners to ban nightly rentals throughout the county. Just so everybody is aware, under HB 253 passed in the legislature in 2017, that's not allowed. What is allowed is for the counties or municipalities to create ordinance and enforcement provisions dealing with nightly rentals. So for those on the line that are hoping that we will totally ban nightly rentals, again, we don't have that option under state law. So what we'll be focusing on is enforcement and regulation and where we best go forward with this policy. With that, we have with us Rick Grover, our planning director. And we're going to start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance by John Lewis, and then we'll go to a roll call by Charlie Ewer. John, welcome. He's, John, as everybody knows, is our Ogden Valley Planning Commission Chair. Welcome.
Thank you, Commissioners. It's an honor to be here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John.
All right. Let's do a roll call. Bear with us, everyone, as we do this. Planning Commissioners who are online, you are muted. I am going to enable the ability for participants to unmute themselves. I request that only the planning commissioners that I call unmute themselves. All right. Do we have Wayne Andriati?
Yes. Did you hear me?
I did. Thank you, Bruce.
Oh, good.
Shanna Francis?
Here, I'm participating.
Ron Lackey?
Present.
Andrew Faverro?
Here. Did you get that?
Yep, got it. Thank you, Andrew. Yeah, thank you. I'll acknowledge, it's a good idea. I'll acknowledge as soon as I've heard. Chris Hoag?
Here.
Thank you, Chris. Greg Bell?
Here, I'm participating.
Thank you, Greg. There we go. Sarah Wickern?
Here.
Thank you, Sarah. Jack Howell? Jack, are you there? I could see Jack's handle here. Jack, if you can hear us, feel free to holler out as we move through the rest of the roll call. Forgive me for just a second, I'm going to hit mute on everyone. Do we have Jed McCormick? Jed, thank you. We have Bren Edwards.
Here.
Bren's present and in the meeting. John Lewis?
Here.
Present and in the meeting. Jeff Burton? Do we have Jeff here? Steve Waldrip? Okay, from the county commission, Gage-Fror?
Here.
James Harvey?
Here.
Scott Jenkins?
Here.
Guess you guys are on the camera, so it's hard to say you're not here, right? Are there any planning commissioners that I failed to call? Feel free to shout out. Okay. Thank you, your attendance has been noted.
Thank you, Charlie, for that. And let's just make mention that any of our planning commissioners, Charlie, if you'll look for their comments, if they'd like to make a public or if they have any questions, let's make sure that they have the opportunity to ask those questions.
Fantastic. Mr. Chairman, if it's okay to guide the planning commissioners to use the raise your hand function of Zoom?
However you want to do it.
Be the easiest way to do it. Or, planning commissioners, if you're comfortable, you can feel free to shoot me a text message or an email, and I'm happy to get you in there. I'm going to disable the ability to unmute yourself with the amount of people we have.
No audio. Charlie, once you get, Charlie, once you get the audio back, you may want to just briefly with those planning commissioners who are virtual, just walk through how you do the raise your hand function on Zoom, just real quick, so they all get a fair...
Perfect. I think it's a fair way.
Yeah, you'll just make sure, make sure all the commissioners know they have the ability to ask those questions. That's for them. Okay.
I haven't had any problems hearing anything, so it may be on his. I don't know if anyone else is having any issues or not.
Okay. Thank you. That was Matt Wilson, our attorney for the Western Weber Planning Commission. Okay, so planning commissioners, just to walk you, just to walk you through how to raise your hand, in the reactions bar at the bottom, you can feel free to click on the thumbs up, and I will see that. Or, even better, if you are in the participant window, so click on participants, and then in the corner, you'll see three dots. You can raise your hand from that function there. And if there are any concerns with that, feel free to hit the thumbs up or the hand clap, and I'll get you unmuted, okay? For everyone else on the call online, I'm going to be muting everybody's audio. You'll be able to hear us. We won't be able to hear you unless I unmute you on this side, so just so you're aware.
You good to go, Charlie?
We're ready.
Good, thank you. Okay, so our work session items, I'm going to ask Mr. Rick Grover to review those with us. I've made my opening comments, I think we've made that clear. Again, the planning commissioners, feel free to ask questions in whatever form you can get Charlie's attention. These presentations, discussions are for your review, and as we move forward, to make sure you have the information in place to make the correct decisions as you make recommendations to this commission body. So, Mr. Grover, if you want to review those presentations and how, the order we're going to take those?
You bet.
And any opening remarks you may have, feel free.
You bet. Thank you, Commissioner Fror. At the end of last year, we sent out a mailer to the public up in the Ogden Valley. We wanted to get a feel on where things were as far as nightly rentals. In that mailer, we indicated where areas were allowed to have nightly rentals and where areas you are not allowed to have nightly rentals. Since that time, we found out that there is an enforcement issue that is happening up in the Ogden Valley with nightly rentals. And that's a concern. And so what we've done is, for the agenda, we'd like to have a presentation by staff, and he's going to, it'll be Mr. Scott Perks, and he's going to give us a current state of short-term rentals in Weber County, and what's happening with those. So you can kind of look to see how everything is happening demographically throughout the county with short-term rentals. Then we'll have a presentation by Eric Brown. And Eric Brown, just for your information, in that he is, he does enforcement of short-term rentals in a private enterprise, and he's working with Host Compliance. And prior to joining Host Compliance, Eric spent the last 16 years in enterprise technology, working for some of the most forward-thinking software leaders in the country. Some of the cities that he has worked for and is working for currently is Denver, Beaver Creek, Fort Collins, the city of Edmonton, Calgary, Sacramento, Orlando, Austin, Texas, and Victoria, just to name a few of those. And we'd like to get his take on short-term rentals, because right now we have one code enforcement officer, and it's very difficult to enforce, as we've seen up in the valley. And so we'd like to look at that perspective from that side of things. And then we would like to have a presentation from Michael Johnson, and he's with the State of Utah HOA, and he has some legislation guidance that he can give us on how the HOAs, because we have several of those up in the Ogden Valley, and how those can be privately managed if they so choose to do that. And so he's going to give us some information that way. And then we'll have the opportunity to hear from Sarah Tolliver, and she is the president and CEO of Visit Ogden. And she'll be just presenting some of the economic impacts that short-term rentals have on a community, and give us some guidance there. And then after that, we'd like to go over the public input. We received public input up until 12 o'clock yesterday, but we actually extended that a little bit, because we saw some that came in. And so we took those that came in until 5 o'clock, and we have those included with that, because we didn't want to short sight anyone on this. We did receive a few today, but those are not included with that. But just bear in mind, if you did make comments today, there's going to be other meetings. And that's what we'd like to discuss with the last part of this meeting, is to get the comments that you and the planning commissioners have after you've received this input. And then we'll also go over a calendar item of possible next meetings. So if you're okay with that, Commissioners, and if you have any questions, let me know. And then if not, Scott.
I do have a question. Before we get started into this, Commissioner Fror, you made a comment at the beginning of this meeting, and I'd like you to explain that comment in a little detail, if you could.
Okay, which comment?
Well, the comment about we can't exclude nightly rentals. You said you checked with the state?
Yeah, so HB 253, and I think...
That was the bill number?
HB 253 passed in 2017, and...
After you and me were gone, should be noted.
Well, actually, I was still there.
Oh, were you? Ah, jeez. HB 250, you know, since it was a House bill.
Let's be clear, that wasn't my bill.
I say HB, it was a House bill.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's where all the good bills come from.
Okay, what did it say?
So, yeah, so there was, as you recall, there was discussion, the legislature, there was a number of cities and counties that were using websites to target nightly rentals.
Right.
And I think this, the main issue started with Washington County. That's where kind of the hotbed was. And anyway, the legislation was put together, because there's a number of private property owners down there, along with the city council, county commissions, that's needed an answer. At that point in time, the legislation basically said a number of things, but the primary intent of the HB 253 was to say, cities and counties, you can't outlaw nightly rentals. You can regulate, you can do enforcement, you can put in provisions, but you can't do a total ban. That's what it says. And that, that was the result of 253.
Great. All right, I just, well, yeah, it does to me. I just want to make sure that everybody online and everybody sitting here understood that before we got started.
Right. Well, that's the reason I brought it up, Commissioners, because we have had a number of people that have made the comment, let's just totally ban. So it's very similar to other state legislation, that we don't have the ability to ignore state legislation.
That's right. And I've had, in my emails, I've had a fair amount that said, look, I've, this is my property up there, I'm not a Weber County resident, but I do own property, and I have the right to rent it out. And then I've had lots, not just a few, but lots, that said, look, I am a resident, I do live here, and I don't want it. And so I just want them to understand the position that us three are in. And our planning commissions, when we address this.
Yeah. So it really comes down, I just didn't, I don't want the discussion to go toward an all-out ban versus allowing. We know we have to allow nightly rentals. What we have to do, what we do have the ability to do is to regulate, enforce it, decide on where they'll be, how they're enforced, the regulation that we're going to talk about tonight. Is that correct, Director?
That is correct.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Commissioner?
Oh, yeah. And I, more than a question, I wanted to make sure everybody sitting here and that was on Zoom with has understood what was happening and why it was happening. I'm sure a lot are saying, well, dang those commissioners, they ought to just ban it. But we don't have the ability to ban it, or the right to ban it.
That's exactly right. Yeah. I think we bumped into the same thing on a few cases with tax law and other, a few other cases. So that's where we're at. Mr. Perks?
Yes.
We ready for Mr. Perks to come forward?
Yes, we are, Commissioner.
Thank you. Mr. Perks, thank you. And again, I know that you've put a great deal of time into research on your personal time and looking at other areas, that, other areas of the country that have nightly rentals, and have really come up with a wide variety of, I guess, suggestions, or options would be the better word, available for discussion tonight. And really, you're going to drill down on why we are here tonight, which is the issue of enforcement.
That's correct. So we've been doing a lot of research, as indicated, over the past several months, as we've known this issue is a growing topic of concern. And tonight, what we'd like to discuss is, my initial presentation, this first set of slides, is really the set of slides that we've presented to both planning commissions thus far, the county commission as of last week in that first work session, and also with some stakeholder groups that we've initially done some research with. We wanted to present them tonight, just to so that the public who hasn't been a part of those initial discussions with stakeholder groups or with the planning commissions is also able to see that information. It is intended to give an idea as to what are we dealing with, what's the current state of affairs here in the county. For those who are unaware of what a short-term rental is, just a quick overview, these are residential dwelling units that are allowed to be rented for periods of less than 30 days. So anybody who owns a dwelling unit, whether it's a primary residence or an investment property, who opens it up, advertises it for rental on any number of platforms, and allows it to be rented on a short-term basis. So this really popped up in the last 10 years or so, as the sharing economy has run its course. When we first started having conversations with the planning commissions, the county commission, and also stakeholder groups, we wanted to gauge their temperature. Where is this issue? Where do they feel like we are currently at as far as this topic is concerned? We showed them this slide, which is a graph of, you know, is it a problem? Is it a crisis? Is it a minor concern? Is it, is it growing into an issue? Where do we stand? And the general consensus that we got from the majority of those who responded was we're kind of right in the middle, in that this is a growing wave. It was, you know, a couple of individuals had mentioned it, it starts like we're starting to ride a wave, and this wave is going to start moving pretty quick on us. And so we got kind of a temperature reading. We know this is an issue, and it's growing. In these discussions, we asked, you know, what are the primary concerns you have with short-term rentals? What have you already experienced? What is kind of the general sentiment? And we showed them some of these images and asked them, you know, is this something that is occurring? You know, do we have neighborhood, neighborhoods that are starting to change their characters? Do we have party houses or occupancies out of control? Is there trash issues, noise, parking, et cetera? We also asked beyond these, you know, these high-level concerns, were there any other concerns? And we took note of those concerns that they had. And we've got those on file for reference. So everybody knows, the county does have existing regulations. It is Section 108, 725, which limits nightly rentals to particular zones and neighborhoods that were developed as PRUDs with a short-term rental option as an initial approval when they, when they went through the approval process. When looking at where our current, current nightly rentals allowed, this particular map shows in green where they are allowed, either because they're part of the Destination Resort and Recreation Zone, the DRR1 Zone, typically found near the resorts, or they're in a PRUD, Planned Residential Unit Development, where nightly rentals was approved when that development was originally reviewed and approved by the county. In purple, that is generally the FR3 Zone, the Forest Residential 3 Zone, those locations require that a business permit and a conditional use permit be pulled before they're legally allowed to operate a nightly rental. So this map shows where they are allowed currently, under current regulation with the county. So keep this in mind as we show future maps, which will show where nightly rentals are occurring that are outside of these areas.
Hold on one second, I think Commissioner Jenkins.
Right, so according to what Commissioner Fror gave us earlier, our statute would be out of compliance with the state statute.
How so?
Because we're allowing it only in certain areas, and this statute said we can't do that.
We're specific in where we allow them.
No, that, that is allowed under, part of the regulation enforcement is to, we can't designate areas under HB 253.
Oh.
We just count outlaw them totally.
Well, why not allow them in areas where we're outlawing them?
Well, that's, yeah, you could interpret it that way, too.
Well, I guarantee, if I was out there, I had an attorney, that's exactly what I'd do. I'd come right after the county.
Sure.
So do you have an opinion on that? Did you check into that? Did you view that?
You know, we, we didn't look into it from that specific angle, but we do know that there are some state requirements that we may not be exactly in compliance with.
Rick, have you looked into this as far, have you had our legal department look into this?
We can look into it more, but as I've looked at it, typically if you have an area where it's allowed, you're meeting that requirement. It's similar to like medical marijuana. You have to provide certain areas for it, and we have provided those areas for it, considering, you know, other options, and making it more restrictive, you could do that. But right now, we have an area for that, and HB talks about allowing for that in certain areas, and we have provided that.
Well, I'd say I would argue that all the way with you. I mean, I, my private property rights, as a private property owner, whoever, I would say, no. By you putting it in a specific zone, you take that right away from me.
And we can...
And this talks about specifically protects my rights.
Yeah. And we can go into more research on that and come back with that for you.
And I would request that.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a great question.
You bet.
I mean, we've heard a number of people that have that same concern. Yeah. Thank you, Scott.
Yep. So those of you who are...
I'm sorry I interrupted you, but...
You're fine.
Okay.
No worries. Please do. So those are, that are looking at this map, kind of keep it in mind, where are these areas that are shown in green and purple? We'll show a couple more maps in just a second that show where some of the nightly rentals are occurring that may not be in these areas. Okay, so here's a problem. The sharing economy, and especially that of short-term rentals, over the past decade, last 10 or so years, has been growing exponentially. And it is something that hasn't slowed down. Year over year, we see that it continues to grow, and thus far, it's an exponential growth curve. We don't see a flattening or a ceiling thus far. More and more platforms are opening up. You know, many of us are familiar with Airbnb and VRBO and HomeAway and those, those large platforms, but there are a lot of niche platforms out there as well, boutique platforms, that it's impossible to catch all of the advertisements if you're looking at them page by page. So we know that they're growing. This first map that we're going to show, this is a map that shows, based on some computer algorithms and some data that was provided to us by Host Compliance, it shows, after scraping most of these websites, where are these rentals being advertised? Where in the county are they occurring? This data, as a county as a whole, so that these are incorporated and unincorporated areas, we've got 1,402 total listings. And of those 1,402, 873 are unique. So oftentimes, people relist their, their properties on multiple platforms, and so we account for those duplicates. So we believe there's at least 873 unique listings that were advertised as of just a few months ago when this data was pulled. This next map, we've cropped out the unincorporated areas and left just, or sorry, the incorporated areas we've cropped out, and we've left just the unincorporated areas. And the data in the unincorporated areas indicates that there's a little over 1,000 total listings, and just a hair under 600 are unique. So that's a big percentage of those listings that are in the unincorporated versus incorporated areas. So it's, it's mostly, a large portion of it's in the unincorporated area, and as shown in this map, most of which are up in the Ogden Valley.
You know, sorry, if I could interrupt you.
Sure.
Go back to the slide before this. Sorry if you'll go to the slide on there, thanks, Charlie. I see a picture of us. There we go, that's the one.
There you are.
It appears by the number of dots listed on that screen, just, and seeing where the mountain range is. I wouldn't put 68%. It doesn't look like 68% of the dots are on the right side of that map, or on the right side of the, east side of those mountains.
It looks like most are on the Wasatch Front, right?
Well, on the, on the, on the west side of those mountains.
Right.
It does.
So that, that's a good observation.
I wanted to hold that question till the end, but you just covered it. And so now I've got more questions, but I won't ask them now, I'll keep learning.
Sure. Yeah, keep in mind, these dots, a lot of them are overlaying themselves, it's hard to get an individual dot to show up. Yeah, keep in mind these dots, a lot of them are overlaying themselves. It's hard to get an individual dot to show up when we've got a lot.
So they show up on TripAdvisor and Airbnb and Verbo and everything else. So you get three dots for one location?
Possibly. So we, we could ask that question from, from Eric Brown with Host Compliance. He does have a presentation which, which can help clarify how this data was, was gathered, but.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt. I'll just keep all the listeners. Well, follow-up to that though, is it's evident that they're between the mountains and I-15.
Absolutely.
So there, it shows the bulk of these in incorporated cities along the Wasatch Front.
That's, that's true.
The big bulk of those are not in Weber County, yet the statistics you've presented us shows that most of them are in Weber County.
That didn't drive.
Unincorporated. Yeah.
From, from a visual perspective, when you look at the map, you see the dots, it looks like there's more on the Wasatch Front on the west side of the mountain range than on up, up east. But there are an awful lot that are up in the Wolf Creek area where those dots are overlaid, clustered really closely together. So you don't get an independent dot for every, for every property. So there's, there's a little bit of overlay where you just can't visually see that many in a small area. Okay, so looking back into the unincorporated area, this is where we show just the unincorporated here. Now we move one side forward, we're going to do a, a simple analysis, an overlay analysis of where the illegals are in comparison to where our current county regulation shows where they, they're allowed. And so this particular map is an overlay that shows those green and purple areas and then also the dots that we have approximate locations for short-term rentals. And what we want to take away from this slide is there are a lot of dots that are in areas that are not covered by either a green or a purple polygon. So we know they're in areas where they technically are not allowed by our current regulations.
I think it would be safe to say most of those dots are not in those areas.
That's correct.
Okay, that's good.
There's a lot out there that are, and keep in mind these dots are approximate locations. We haven't honed in on a very specific street address. We're just able to get approximate locations so far.
So what you're saying, Scott, go back to that slide. It looks like a majority are actually what we would call on the illegal side.
Yep.
Under our current ordinance. Would that be correct?
That, that's mostly correct. So this, one clarification, this big group of, of dots here in the Wolf Creek area, there is a purple polygon. That polygon is underneath these dots, so it doesn't shine through as an area where they are allowed. So these areas, you know, maybe the, the majority of these or a good portion of them could be legal. But many are also in areas just surrounding that Wolf Creek area where they're not. Okay, just a clarification on that. Okay, one thing we also presented to everybody thus far, and we also want to present to the public, is that there's an awful lot of tax revenue that's going uncollected. This, this table shows the, the total tax burden of somebody who would be operating a short-term rental. If they're advertising it and using it as such, they would be subject to just a hair under 12% of tax as broken out on this table. The majority of, of these rentals are not remitting their, their proportionate amount of taxes. So then we had a discussion. We asked, well, what's the solution? What do we do? We know based on the, the, the state legislature that we're not able to strictly prohibit. What do we do? What's the solution? We know we have a lot of these that are growing that are, are illegal and they're not following, you know, the existing regulation. Is there, you know, a scenario that we need to come up with on this? And so we asked them, how do we enforce any regulations? We know we only have one co-enforcement officer at the time. You know, how do we, how do we go about enforcing? And so we asked various questions of these stakeholder groups and we took down many notes. But we had a couple of things pop up. A lot of them indicated that we need to hone in on licensing, make sure everybody who is renting, if they're legal to, to license that, that particular business. To designate a representative for individuals to call with complaints. Who do we call if there's an issue with the property? Is there a way to have a hotline or a website where complaints could be, you know, provided 24/7? How quick can somebody respond usually with, with existing co-enforcement or law enforcement? It usually takes some time for them to respond just due to distances and availability. Do we, do we solicit the help of a third-party company to help us with our enforcement? And do we need to look at our fines or our violation structure? How do we, how do we crack down on these illegals? So those are a couple of the comments that came back when we asked those, those questions. So that's just a quick summary of what we've presented thus far. Do you have some any questions?
Thank you. Before we get questions from the planning commissioners, Charlie, can you get Matt Wilson? He actually texted me, said he had an answer or possible answer to Commissioner Jenkins' question.
Absolutely, yes.
Matt Wilson is our county attorney.
Matt, I just asked you to unmute.
Can you hear me?
There you are.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Yes. So we have looked into that. We cannot outright ban the nightly rentals, but we can put restrictions on them. So we can designate which zones they're allowed in, but we can't just say they're not allowed in any zone. So I don't know if that answers your question, Commissioner Jenkins, or if you have any further questions?
Well, yeah, I don't agree with your analysis there. To you restrict them out of business, you might as well. That's the same thing. That's just a different way of saying it. You say, well, you, you can outright outlaw it, but you can, you can regulate it. Well, if I regulate it, I say, well, I'm not going to outlaw you, but I'm telling you that you can't be there because da, da, da. It's the same thing.
I, I don't agree and I'm happy to come up and discuss this with you a little further when we have some more time, but yeah. And I can point out in the code where there's, when we have a little more time, I, I don't want to take too much time away from the meeting, but yeah.
Okay. Well, there's no question I want to talk about that. But you know, this, this is exactly the discussion we used to have attorneys down legislature gauge when we'd have this. And the fact of the matter is when you over-regulate, you might as well outlaw it. And it's one and the same. And I'd take you to court in a minute, Matt, on something like that.
Matt, will you make sure, Commissioner, will you make sure that that's in a work session, please, when you have that appointment? I'd be interested to.
Yes, I will.
We'll get you on the agenda, Matt. I think that's worthy of discussion. So Scott, before you go, so in, in the green areas you put on this was, was your designated areas, which obviously we have some questions on. Was it by zone or how were those areas determined?
Yeah. So if you guys want to throw that slide back up.
I didn't see a zone overlay on that.
There we are. So on, on our GeoGizmo, our online mapping tool, anybody in the public can go and look at where these areas are by turning on the layers within the planning layers and then under nightly rentals. So you can see in green, this is where they are allowed. They're either allowed because they're part of the DRR1 Zone, which is the resort zone. Or they're part of a, a neighborhood that was planned as a Planned Residential Unit Development, a PRUD. And from the onset of that development, they said, we want to do nightly rentals. Here's how we're gonna enforce or how the HOA, CC and ours are going to regulate those within our own, our own community. And so they were approved for nightly rentals as part of the PRUD process from the onset. So that, that's what the green area in this map is showing, either the DRR1 Zone or PRUD communities. And then in purple, the FR3 Zone, they can be allowed, but you do have to get a business license and you do have to go through the conditional use permit process. And they have to bring in their, their request for conditional use, show how they're going to mitigate any concerns or impacts to their surroundings. That's where the purple areas on that map are indicating.
Thank you. Just to be clear, so the PRUDs are, are within those green areas, had the ability to say no to nightly rentals. It wasn't an option they had to take. It was still a vote of the CC, the people in those PRUDs.
That's right.
Is that correct?
PRUDs can develop without the intent of having.
Okay. So they, they, PRUDs do have the ability to restrict. And we know that some PRUDs in the valley have done that. Exactly. And we'll be hearing about HOAs and PRUDs here shortly. Charlie, any questions that you see coming from the planning commissioners? On, on this presentation?
Not right now. No.
John, come on up.
Hi, Commissioners, thank you. I wanted to hold some of my questions till later, but, but now that we're talking about PRUDs and stuff. So just two quick points I wanted to talk about regarding the presentation, which was great, by the way, Scott. First of all, I, I guess I dispute that there's, let's say, 600 unique rentals in Ogden Valley. I think, I own a property management company and many times property management companies, which are the predominant managing force up there, will put one ad out and it'll represent the 100 or the 10 customers we have, clients. So you might see a unique 600 advertisements, but I'll bet that that represents twice as many units because, you know, we're, there's no reason if you represent 50 people to put out 50 VRBOs. You just put out one or two or, or types and then, you know, all the three bedrooms get rented off the same ad. So be careful thinking you only have 600. I bet you have 600 at Wolf Creek. You know, legal nightly rentals. So anyway, just keep that in, in mind.
Do you disagree on the illegals then?
Well, no, I'm just saying we have at least 600 legal ones at Wolf Creek.
Okay.
So in, in my opinion, but we also have, we probably have 600 illegal too.
That's my point.
Yeah, there's just a lot more out there than shows up on the radar because they're all kind of under the radar. Okay. So second point I wanted to make was Commissioner Jenkins, so great point as far as property rights and, but there's a nuance that I want to make sure we catch when it comes to PRUDs or resorts or neighborhood HOAs that have, have bought into a particular, you know, idea. So everything at Wolf Creek, as just an example, there's ski lakes, there's all sorts of other places, but you know, we have very carefully balanced, you know, 2,000 people at Wolf Creek. And some people say, well, look, I want to buy something and live in Chicago and rent here and rent it out nightly and visit when I want. And other people say, well, I want to move here and I want a beautiful, big, huge house and I don't want nightly rentals. And other people are like, I want something in the middle and I want rentals, but only weekly. And so we balanced all out. And when, and when we came to you and said, we want, you know, Trapper's Ridge to be like this, but not nightly because we'll need more parking for that, you know, we'll need different things for that. So we approved much smaller parking requirements, much smaller amenities. You know, as a group, we wanted to be weekly rented only. And so, and, and Mussala was nightly and Highlands and Retreter, you know, monthly at best. So if we blanketly say everybody, you know, can go to nightly, I think we're going to unbalance some things that are really important. And I think there's a difference in my mind between the guy who buys a house, you know, in the middle of the city or just a normal neighborhood that's a typical subdivision versus a PRUD where you knew when you bought that I can't rent this nightly. You know, for that guy to complain, well, I, my rights, I should be able to do it. You were told upfront, you can't, and that's why you wanted to be here and that's protecting your value or not. But, so I just wanted to, to, to put that out that we should keep in mind that there's already some balancing going on out there and that there's a difference between Ogden City or, or just a normal metropolitan area that has single-family homes and other neighborhoods that were designed specifically for either nightly or not nightly. We had to be careful. So just wanted to point that out.
Yeah. And I do believe as time goes that that's a discussion we should have in depth. Because you bring up a really good point, John.
Mr. Chairman. But, but John, just so we're clear, you brought up that in these PRUDs in Wolf Creek, you have the opportunity or each of those PRUDs has the opportunity to either allow them or not allow them, set them weekly, nightly, whatever they want or not at all.
Yeah. When we came to you initially, PRUDs you can have nightly. And so we, some neighborhoods, we decided here's where we want to do it and here's where we don't want to do that. And people bought accordingly.
Sure. But the point is, is that the development, the developer, the owners of that then decide what they want. It's not coming from the county.
No, no, they.
It's self-imposed.
We just made it up. It was.
Self-imposed regulations. People either buy there because they want to or they don't buy there because they can't live with it.
It's a particular lifestyle or, you know, a particular concept and they either bought it or they didn't buy it. And then to switch what they bought, that's the scary part to me. You know, they thought they bought one thing and now it's a different thing and that can be disastrous.
I agree with that and I don't want to get into the regulations of PRUDs. The complaints we're getting are people who have individual cabins up there and choose to rent them out two or three nights or two or three times a year.
Yeah.
You know?
But it might be that we come up with some scenarios that, you know, make it reasonable to rent stuff out, but you don't necessarily supersede HOAs.
I agree with that. I absolutely agree with that.
No, I, I, I think the statute's clear on HOAs and PRUDs. I let them manage themselves. That's my belief.
I agree.
Let them make those decisions themselves.
At least the parking's not an issue.
The issue that we see though, is that people that, the areas outside, we're going to call illegal areas. And somebody buys a home in an illegal area and then a year later they have a nightly rental next to them. It's illegal, but it's still a nightly rental. And then, so who makes the enforcement? How do we go about controlling that?
Yeah, that's the tough part.
And who pays for that? You know, as, as the directors mentioned, we have one co-enforcement person for the entire county.
Right.
But this goes beyond that. I mean, I talk about somebody up there on the mountain that has a cabin, but I had a lady call me the other day and says she lives in Valhalla, up Ogden Canyon. You know where that's at?
I do.
And she said that there was a home up there for several and a realtor bought it. And next thing you know, she says it got nightly rentals in it. Well, they're ready to lynch that guy. And, but what is the difference between that guy's rights and the guy who owns the cabin on the, the mountain? And that's, that's, we've got to determine that. That's very important that we do that.
Exactly. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, there is a comment from a planning commissioner.
Go ahead.
This is coming from Western Weaver Planning Commissioner Greg Bell. He says, how is regulating what zone short-term rentals are allowed in any different than regulating any land use by zone? We limit where commercial developments can occur and how many homes are allowed based on zoning. How is this any different?
Do you want me to answer that?
Go ahead.
Well, as I look at that, it's a, a use of your individual property. Now, we, we do say that somebody can have a certain size property based on the, the zone that they're in. So in R10 or 12, R15 or 20, we list use in there. But we don't say you can't use your property or that you can't rent your house to somebody in that property. No, nowhere else do we do that. And I think it's important that we decide that. To Greg's point, I think it's very important. And I view this HB 253 as saying that, that we can't say you can't do this. Now, we can regulate it. We can say, well, if you're going to do it, you got to have parking and you got to have garbage collection and you got to it's silent at 10 o'clock at night and those kinds of things. I agree with all that. But to just say, no, we can't do it. We're going to zone it out. I would argue that zoning it out is exactly what that HB 253 addresses.
It's a good argument.
Yeah.
Anything else, Charlie?
That's all right now.
Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie. And Greg, thank you. That was a great comment.
Thanks for that question, Greg. Anything else, Scott?
Unless you have any questions for me.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Director, you want to move to your next presentation?
Yeah, Eric Brown will be presenting and he's going to be talking about third-party enforcement. So Charlie, is Eric available?
He is. Hang on a second. I got to scroll through about 100 people. Let me find him.
While you're pulling.
How many people do we have on the meeting, Charlie?
I don't have, oh, it's 76.
76.
Somebody just dropped off. 75.
All right. We bored them.
Hopefully it wasn't Eric.
Nope, I got Eric right here. Eric, I'm asking you to unmute right now.
I am unmuted.
Welcome, Eric. Thank you.
Thank you. That was, that was a great, great discussion. I wanted to, you know, provide some comments. I do agree with a lot of the comments that have been made, specifically with John. And if I can, before I start, maybe I'll just share just some feedback on, on two of those points, key points. One, the regulation on the HB 0253 bill. We actually have a colleague of mine, his name is John Spuyler. John was the mayor of Garden City and he is with, he's with our company now. And so I will connect you folks with John Spuyler to talk about that, that part of the legislation as well. And so John started to self-enforce this, you know, in his home, in, in Garden City and actually started a company that, that Host Compliance has since acquired. But I'm definitely happy to connect you with, with John. I was just trying to reach him to. provide some feedback on, on that legislation as well. It's more insights. I'm not sure if you guys have heard or familiar with John Spiller or not. Second part of that is John's comments on the number of short-term rentals. Definitely agree with that assessment. You know, what, the data that we provided to Scott in the planning department is just a snapshot in time. And what we see generally is that you have churn. You'll always have people that will list and remove their listing and list and remove their listing just based on when they're going to use their home or based on seasonality changes. So there very well, you know, could be over, you know, six hundred short-term rentals in that area and over twelve hundred, you know, easily. It's really hard to say. The key point though, is that the map that we did show you is, is pretty accurate. The only time that we see inconsistencies with a map is when you're in a tourist area, maybe Disneyland in Anaheim where people will list a short-term rental that's across, you know, near Anaheim or College Station, near College Station where, when they're outside of the city. But, you know, for, for, for Weaver County, I don't see those type, you know, those type of listings happening unless there's, you know, a ski resort. Maybe they're trying to say they're near a ski resort, things like that. But for the most part, that's a pretty accurate representation. Keep in mind that, that we haven't done the assessment as far as running this through and matching it up with your records there. So we don't have those specific addresses just yet. That is, is, is a very accurate snapshot in time. All right, so am I able to share my screen or will you be sharing my, my presentation?
You can share yours. Let me, hang on one second. Hit share screen, see if that works out.
I don't know if that helped clear anything up for the commission or if there are any, any comments back, but hopefully that's helpful.
Thank you for that, Eric. That was good.
Okay. All right. So let me share my screen here. So definitely appreciate and, you know, the time, you know, in this discussion. It's a great discussion. We work with over three hundred fifty customers today, but we're having these type of conversations every single day. It's all we do. So we're very, very appreciative to be involved in these discussions. There are over ten thousand articles written every year about short-term rentals. So you're definitely not alone in this. This is not a Utah problem. It's not a national problem. We have customers in Canada. I'm working with the Prince Edward Island right now on some of their enforcement challenges. And not only that, it's, it's a global issue. And the catch-up, you know, the, the feeling of how do we, we catch up to this really comes down to, you know, this is a technology, technology problem. And what we've built is, is the ability to, to combat that and to catch up with this short-term rental and sharing economy phenomenon, really what it is. And so with that, just walk you through the introduction today and kind of clear up maybe some confusion because you'll see two names today in, in the presentation. You'll see Host Compliance, but then you'll also see Granicus. And just a quick, just a quick information on what that is. Host Compliance was actually the first company founded four years ago that answered and solved the problem of short-term rentals in Tiburon, California. And what happened late last year is a company called Granicus acquired Host Compliance. And so you'll see those two names kind of interchange. Host Compliance is the name of the service and Granicus is now the parent company of Host Compliance. So, so, so you know kind of the background there. What I'll cover today is just some insights on what we're seeing nationally and then break it down to the Utah and Weaver County markets. Hope to share with some trends and some data that is really important to, to keep in mind post-COVID especially and some of the, the surprising statistics that we're seeing today. And then lastly, what I'll do is I'll walk you through some case studies of some of our customers that I know personally and some of the things that they were trying to achieve in, in their communities and how we went about partnering with them to, to, to reach those goals. So with that said, just a quick introduction to Granicus then. Granicus has been in business for twenty years. We have over forty-five hundred customers, government customers. With that said, we have over two hundred million citizens that our, our services communicate with every single day. Every day, every single day, we have a hundred thousand new citizen, citizens signing up for these type of communications from their, from their local governments. And so with that said, our, our mission is to help governments really digitize, digitize and modernize the experience of working with, with citizens. And so we do have these five different type of modules that we offer and Host Compliance is now the newest part of, of Granicus offering. When it comes to Host Compliance, working with local governments, I mentioned that we have over three hundred fifty customers that we work with today. What's really, the most important part of this slide here is that, you know, not, there's not one single cookie cutter solution to everybody's different situations, as you know. So what we've built really is a platform that's super flexible, that allows you to really build out a, an enforcement program that matches your ordinances. And so there's really nothing we haven't seen when it comes to these kinds of things. You mentioned a ban early on. We can tell you right now that as a best practice, it, it won't go well. We've seen it happen in Nashville, or excuse me, yeah, pre-Nashville before we started working with them. In New Orleans, same issues. In California, we've seen all the way down the coast. It just doesn't work and it's very expensive. And so as a best practice, coming from these types of cities, we can tell you and these types of customers, what might work better. And so we're definitely the thought leader in that, in that aspect in sharing the best practice. And we're not, we're not the experts. We really are not. Our customers are the experts when it comes to this. We're definitely just the piece in the middle that's helping them reach out and enact fair policies. And the main goal today is to help you see how we can really make this work for everybody involved, the community, for the hosts and for, you know, you folks. And so that's kind of the goal here today. When it comes to Utah, we actually work with the eleven local jurisdictions today, all the way from the top, Rich County, down to the south in San Juan County. And so we do have quite a bit of Utah experience. A lot of these customers, again, actually what happened with, with this is, I mentioned John Spiller earlier. John Spiller built this solution only for his town. And what happened is he, it caught momentum and he started seeing that he could help out other places. And so some of these customers are from John Spiller's first company that he started was just called Bear Cloud Software. And so we do have eleven customers today that we're working with in Utah. When you look at the picture for tourism from last year for Utah specifically, this is taken from the Salt Lake Tribune, just a snapshot, just Airbnb, not VRBO, anybody else, just Airbnb. There's some huge potential here and, and no tax recovery is not one of the main issues, but I'm sure everybody is focused on that now with, with everybody's budgets now. But last summer, there were some huge numbers for Utah. What we're seeing today, the surprising statistic today, what we're seeing today is that since COVID, after, you know, the shutdown, there's some, some cabin fever here. But now we're seeing the same timeframe last year to today in Utah alone, there's fifty-three percent growth in short-term rentals. Now, we're seeing two type of new renters. One renter that we're seeing is actually a new renters, it's a work from home renter. This renter has been home for two months and he's been with his kids and he, he might have an important meeting, like presenting to a commission. And so he needs to get out of his house, get away from the kids, focus. And so he's going to go rent a short-term rental. That's one, a new visitor, our new rent, renter that we're seeing. The second one is just a local traveler, someone that usually would travel to Anaheim or travel to the beach and now is trying to explore their state. And so we're attributing a lot of the growth in Utah to that. We also have city, or states like Nevada next door that are shut down, California that are shut down. I have personal friends, I have friends that are visiting Utah now for the first time and that are from California. And so, you know, with, with the way that these short-term rentals are growing, we only see it continue to grow. Scott shared some important growth statistics where short-term rentals on a global growth chart are at about a forty-seven percent annual, compound annual growth. And we only see that continuing to grow with two factors. Number one, what I just described, and then number two being, you know, the incomes of, of folks now having to leverage their assets more than ever before. Again, since, you know, the sharing economy happened just in two thousand eight, here we are back again and, you know, folks are looking to, to increase their incomes in different ways. And so that's some of the data that we're seeing from Utah. Now zeroing in on Weaver County, I'll share with you some, some of the rates. And again, this is just a snapshot. Seasonalities are going to change this, but this is back from, I think, March, I believe, when I first met with Scott. And so the median nightly rate at that snapshot was a hundred and fifty dollars. From the unit type, we're able to see what type of units are, are being rented. Is it just that extra bedroom? Is it a couch? What we're seeing for the majority of the rentals, ninety-three percent of them are the entire home. When we look at the makeup of the listing types, we're seeing what John described as that, you know, condo or multifamily home and then the single-family homes make up the other half. And then the eleven percent, we just have not identified just yet what, what those could be. But that kind of gives you a good idea of the types of homes that are being rented in the, in the county. And so I'll walk you through now some of the key case studies that, that we, we talked about and kind of, you know, reasons why they wanted to regulate, you know, meeting with different customers every single day. There's usually about a top six, top seven reasons. These are obviously things that you guys are focused on as far as protecting the quality of life, preserving neighborhood character, you know, ensuring housing availability, affordability and resolving some of these complaints that you, you talked about. And then, you know, the noise, parking, parties, those are all issues that each community deals with when it comes to short-term rentals. And again, there's really no one-size-fits-all approach to this, but what our technology and our platform provides is the ability to really solve a lot of these issues. And I'll kind of walk you through some of these examples. In working with the city of Fort Collins, Colorado, one of the things that they were focused on was safety. That was one of their main priorities. And without knowing who's doing what, it really became an issue of liability for them and trying to understand what was really happening. Like we just described and what we talked about, these are, these are guesstimations that we think is, is going on in the county based on just things that bubble up, complaints that bubble up, what we see visually or what we hear of. But without looking at the real data, you just don't know what's really happening. And that's really what we helped them do. We were able to help them achieve about a ninety-seven percent compliance rate. That's with five hundred, five hundred-plus rentals. So out of the five hundred-plus rentals, ninety-seven of them have a registration. They know who they are. They know how to contact them. They're paying their taxes, those types of things. I was able to help them collect lodging taxes. Just a quote from Jeff Mahalik. He says, now that they have a solution like this, the staff, it's one person, by the way, she can compete, complete more in less time and the city's able to collect taxes on their short-term rentals. Riedoso, they were focused, they actually had, you know, this is a tourism town. They're used to this. And they did have an in-house system already and they had about a thousand short-term rentals. And so what they found out is they just couldn't keep up with the, the amount of short-term rentals. And they had to look to a third party to do this. And so we were able to help them increase compliance in the first six months to about eighty-five. They're at a ninety percent plus now. We're able to help them on the lodging tax, operational efficiencies, improve the tax processes. The biggest thing for them, it wasn't just about the revenue recovery. It really was more about the safety and the impact of the neighborhoods there. Denver County is a big one. They have eight thousand short-term rentals in Denver County. In the first four months, they, they only had about three hundred of those identified, by the way. And this is a team that has technology, that has a staff, a big staff of enforcement, but they just didn't have that ability to go out and, and locate and find and, and get these short-term rentals in compliance. We identified thirty-five hundred in the first, first four months, were able to collect just on permits in the first eight months, one point one million. And so their ROI in the first four, eight months was, was extremely beneficial for the program. The other thing about that is they now have one of the highest compliance rates in the country for as many a short-term rentals that they have. They're almost at ninety-nine percent. You know, you always will have some churn where, where people will be coming on as a new host or dropping off. But they're now in a, in a situation to support, you know, the community, understand and respond to issues that have to do with short-term rentals. And lastly, Truckee, California is, customers saw, just that phenomenon, the growth chart in, in Truckee changed very quickly and they weren't able to keep up. We were able to go in there and help them get, gain the awareness, first of all, of the short-term rental ordinances. Actually helped them draft a lot of their ordinances in some of the best practices that I shared. But also, one of the key things for them was, was recovering a lot of that tax revenue. That tax revenue represents about a third of, of their budget for, for, and they use it for general services like public safety and road maintenance. So they're very happy with the services that we provide, but also more happy about the ability to manage the impact of short-term rentals in their areas. And so I'll go through just a couple highlights of what our platform actually does and, and the, the interface that we provide. So you could kind of see how one person in, in, in an enforcement department could actually manage something as large as this. So if you log in, what we provide is just an interface that provides kind of that same screenshot, high overview of, of what you saw. And this will just continually be added data to every single day. We go out and we, we scrape the data from these websites every single day and, and, and add that information. From there, we build a repository, a single record of that short-term rental. And everything that has to do with that unique rental is documented, whether it be a, a letter or a warning or a call or a complaint or taxes. Everything is housed in one single record, providing the county the ability to manage this effectively and increase the operational efficiencies. With that, we also automate the process of notification and sending out the letters. Then these letters are, are provided in automated fashion, but they're provided on the county letterhead to the short-term rental host, letting them know that these are the ordinances that they need to comply with. And these are the, this is the location where they need to go ahead and register, the action they need to take depending on, on the situation. And that's kind of what we do to help raise that compliance and get more people registered, understanding what they need to do to be in compliance. And again, we provide a, a platform, an interface to help you manage this process. So you know who's received which letter or is, or if, if they've responded and also an update if the letter has been received and delivered. And the, one of the things that we do that is beneficial is we do offer what is called a twenty-four seven hotline for short-term rentals. So that, you know, complaints don't have to go to first responders. We, we take that burden and we can, we can go ahead and put something in the ordinance that provides the ability for, for the county to put the host as the person that should be responsible for these type of complaints. So if a call comes in, we'll go ahead and take the information from the complaintant, ask them to upload any information, any proof, a picture of the parking, the trash, whatever it might be. And then we'll go ahead and contact the host of that short-term rental and they have some time to go ahead and call the, the renter and try to resolve the issue, whether it be noise or trash or parking, whatever it might be. And so with that said, what we do then is we compile all of this data in real time, in a real-time interface so that the county can then see what type of issues are bubbling up. And this is real, you know, these are the real type of issues. Like, like right now, we are seeing on our data across all of our customers, about a hundred and fifty-nine percent increase in complaints. And so we're able to track all of those. And now cities are able to see what type of issues are going on with the short-term rentals. are able to see what type of issues are going on with the short-term rentals and address them as needed. You know, if you have somebody, maybe they're advertising the house as a big party house, or a bachelor party house, whatever it might be, whatever they're using, you may be able to put something in your ordinance that Scott mentioned, is putting fines in place, so that, you know, that host, as they rent that out, and maybe they got a warning the first time, they may think twice about renting that out to that party again. And that's kind of how we helped direct these types of activities and curb those types of activities with our customer base. And then the last thing is that any of this data is always available to the county. This is your data, and we house all of this data for you, but it's easily pulled from the charts that you seen earlier to the short-term rent, or to these complaints, all of this data is available for you. We provide this data for any type of appeal, court processes, things like that. We've done that in many cases as well. We've provided expert testimony when needed as well. And then just the really, the most important part about this is if you're going to draft an ordinance, you need to be able to enforce it, and that's the key thing, is because we are going out and we're capturing all the information, all the activity, and it's all housed in the system, that nothing can be deleted from, by the way, you're able to really enforce what the ordinances that you put in place. So lastly, last thing, just some of the benefits that we talked about, but I would say the key thing here is that, you know, we really want this to work for everybody. We've seen its success over and over and over. We have about a 95% customer retention rate, and we love that we're providing value for our customers, but the biggest thing is that we're helping the communities. And that is, that's my presentation. So I will go ahead and turn the time back over to you.
Thank you for that presentation, Eric. Very informative. Charlie, any questions from planning commission?
Not that I can see right now. I'll let you know if one comes up.
You know, this is Commissioner Jenkins. I was way impressed with your presentation and what you're doing. This has obviously reached a level that is very technical and high-tech. I'm amazed how you're able to harvest the information to even find these people, and what's happening right now. And that's obviously changed a lot too right now.
Yeah. It's a scalability issue, and it can only be done with the right technology algorithms. And there's not a lot of companies that can do this. There are really only three companies in the world that do this today.
So do you put somebody in our community boots on the ground that actually go out and talk to these people, or is it all done through the phone or internet?
No, we would do it all virtually. So we're providing the identification of each short-term rental. That's what we're aiming to do. And then sending out that notification letter in an automated fashion to the actual host or to the owner of that property. And, you know, and then, you know, I think it's Iris, is that correct, at the county?
That's correct, that's correct.
Right. She would then be able to manage, you know, which short-term rentals have received that, who needs letter two, where they are in the process of compliance. And that's the easiest way that this is done, you know. This whole thing with COVID has taught us, you know, you guys have, looks like you guys are very efficient now with Zoom. I don't know if that was the case four months ago.
As time's gone on, we've got better.
And so that's what we're seeing, is that things are changing, and we need to be more efficient, do more with less. And so that's really what our technology provides, is the ability for Iris to sit back at her desk and be able to manage 1,000 short-term rentals.
So if we show interest in this and decide we want to move further, I guess at that time you'd sit down with us and give us a bid, huh?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
Eric, one question for you. So if you listened earlier, you heard that we have some areas in the county that we've actually zoned, not approving short-term rentals. Have you worked with other cities or counties that have had areas that are approved, and then other areas that are not approved? And you talk about non-compliance, so how does that work if you were to get a call, or the county was to get a call on a non-compliant, but it's in an area that was what we've been considered to be illegal? So how do you view that as a policy decision in terms of working your, you know, trying to make this work for us as a county?
Yeah, we see this everywhere. We really do see this everywhere. I just worked with the county of Maui with some of the same issues, and they're actually, these are key issues. I will say, I live in the county of Washington County right now, who is also looking at this right now, and they have areas in their jurisdiction too that are zoned. You know, I'm not sure if you're familiar with this area, but down here, you have specific areas like Wolf Creek that people are generally zoned as tourism areas. But if you look at the map, they look just like your map. They, these short-term rentals are in suburban areas. They are just about everywhere they can be in the county. And so that's one of the challenges that they're working on as well. The second part of your answer, that's a more challenging one, and I don't know if I have a good answer for you, because it's how you interpret it, and up to you guys, I guess, but we're just providing the technology. That's the easy answer.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Do you have any questions from the commissioners, Charlie? Anything come through yet?
Not yet, no.
Okay, thank you. Eric, thank you for that presentation. Very informative.
Thank you. Sure.
Okay, Director, we're gonna go to Michael Johnson?
Yes. And Charlie, is he on? And he has a presentation too, I believe.
Yeah, he has his on. Hang on one second, let me find his name.
That was impressive.
Michael, I just asked you to unmute. You there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Perfect.
Awesome. Thank you very much for the opportunity to participate tonight in this important discussion. We're gonna talk a little bit, I'm gonna talk, I'm gonna share my screen here, about short-term rentals and their effects in community associations. We've talked a lot tonight about PRUDs, PUDs. The term "community associations" works for all condominiums, planned developments, mixed-use cabins, metro areas. And I owned FCS Community Management here in Utah for 22 years, and we manage about 30,000 homes here from St. George up to Logan, Vernal, over to Grantsville. Part of my responsibilities represent the industry and the Community Associations Institute, which is a member trade organization for those who serve on boards, live in community associations, and those who take care of them. So I just want to share a little bit of numbers on, from the 2020 Satisfaction Survey on community associations. It's interesting, here in Utah, we kind of have a hard time sometimes, we don't, understanding how community associations work. We're proud, we don't like the man telling us how to live our lives, and when you agree to live in a community association, you are essentially agreeing to allow the man to tell you how to live part of your life. But they still do remain preferred places to call home. In the 2020 National Survey, 89% of residents rate their overall community association experience as very good or good. 89% say members of their elected governing boards absolutely, or for the most part, serve the best interest of their communities. Remember, community associations elect from amongst the other owners, boards of directors to govern their communities. 94% say that association rules protect and enhance property values or have a neutral effect. Only 4% say rules harm property values. The survey looks at governance, and the governance of community associations is subject, of course, to different state laws and regulations, local laws, regulations. And so we asked people, would you like to see more or less government control of their associations, or do you prefer no change? And 74% of residents prefer either no change or less government control within their associations. Do the rules in your community protect and enhance your property values, harm them or make no difference? 94% of residents say that their association's rules protect and enhance property values or have a neutral effect. Once again, only 4% say the rules harm their property values. And you can see, this goes from 2006 to the most recent completed a couple months ago. And yeah, it goes up and down a little bit. In Utah, we have approximately 680,000 Utahns that live in 258,000 homes in about 3,400 community associations. 68 million people nationally live in community associations. And you can see that the residents, their associations, when you look at the economic input, impact is huge. Residents pay $922 million a year to maintain their communities in Utah. Otherwise, these costs would fall to local governments. 23,000 Utahns are elected to their boards each year, providing $19 million in volunteer service. And homes in associations are generally valued about 5% to 6% greater than those who aren't. So what is the national policy in regards to short-term rentals and regulations? Once again, we've talked about the sharing economy tonight, and for housing, it's changing how homeowners rent their properties. Short-term or vacation rentals in the association world are typically those that are leased for less than 30 consecutive days. The pace of STRs has quickly surpassed appropriate government response and regulation, and it's essential that community associations, HOAs, have a voice in any legislative and regulatory process. The nature of short-term rentals is not harmonious with the community association housing model, which focuses on bringing people together, strengthening neighborhood bonds, and promoting a sense of community and belonging. Volunteers, the boards that are elected by their neighbors, set policies and oversee the operations, and are charged with acting in the best interest of their community. This is the center of community association governance. These volunteer board members, along with those in the management industry, are guided by the association's governing documents. And as Commissioner Foray has mentioned several times tonight, these associations have the right to dictate how they are going to handle short-term rentals. These association governing documents are created to maintain standards, protect property values, and encourage a sense of community stewardship. Governing documents, these CCNRs or declarations, form a private contract between each homeowner and the association, and dictate the community's rules and regulations for property rights and standards of personal conduct. Housing purchasers choose where to live, and if, within a community association, to accept the contractual and ethical responsibilities, to abide by the established policies, and to meet their obligations to the association and to their neighbors living in the community. The community association housing model succeeds when a true sense of community is cultivated, and there's an active homeowner involvement based upon a culture of building consensus. In contrast, short-term visitors typically have no ties to the community, and are not contractually bound by the association's established policies, and are generally not invested in the overall good of the community. Now, we could say the same thing about regular renters as well. The Community Association Institute and our industry strongly supports this housing model, and recognizes that no two communities are the same. And CAI recognizes that the sharing economy phenomenon has significantly transformed the dynamics of renting property. Community associations are diverse. As such, policies need to be tailored to meet the character, culture, and desire of the homeowners in a particular community. Boards of directors with input from all the homeowners, they are in the best position to decide whether short-term rentals are appropriate for their community, and is the appropriate governing body to craft suitable policies. This is assuming that the documents, the governing documents of the association will allow, or could be amended to permit, short-term rentals to reflect the preferences of the current homeowners. We support short-term rental regulations that are consistent with the association's governing documents, federal, state, local law, and serves to protect and preserve the ability of association homeowners to manage their own affairs. We oppose governmental regulations that would intrude upon community association's board of directors' autonomy to serve the best interest of their communities. So what are our recommendations then? Short-term rental regulations should not impair the contractual covenants and take decision-making authority away from community association homeowners. This degrades the very core of community associations and their governance, which is based, once again, on that private contractual obligation of the community's homeowners. There's some sample language, like from Virginia, and there's a white paper, I'll show you in a minute, that has several other municipalities' recommendations. But basically, I like what Virginia did, saying, "Nothing in this section regarding short-term rentals shall be construed to supersede or limit contracts or agreements between or among individuals or private entities related to the use of real property, including recorded declarations and covenants." CAI has a website, caionline.org, and if you go to slash advocacy, you can look and find this extensive white paper on short-term vacation rentals and how they impact in community associations. In summary, community associations are a great way to self-govern and to therefore self-regulate short-term rentals. That's it for my presentation. Thanks for having me.
Thank you very much, Michael. Questions for Michael?
Anything, Charlie? We do have one. Hang on one second. It's Andrew Faverro.
Hold on a second there, Michael, if you would.
Okay. Andrew, I'm going to ask to unmute right now.
Thank you for your presentation. Some good information there. My question is, is how do you fit in with the local government? Are you a contractor to help establish while the development is taking place, or do you fit in more with the government end where the regulations for the associations are actually, you know, built to be fair and so forth?
Yeah, I mean, CAI works with both boards, developers, management, so all ends of that spectrum. So it's similar, this issue is very similar to us in the industry as solar panels. We're about three sessions ago in the Utah Legislature. We believe that there's a private contract in the governing documents. Those have to be recorded, and they're created by the developer. They have to be recorded prior to anyone purchasing in that community, and it sets an established way of doing business. Representative Oda, when he- Representative Oda, when he was in legislature, probably about eight years ago, made it so that associations can't put rental restrictions on their homeowners without amending the governing documents. So whether it's short-term rentals, solar panels, or, or regular rentals, those need to be handled through the recorded document that anyone can find on a title search and which the state maximizes. It takes sixty-seven percent of all homeowners, not just those who show up at a meeting, but all homeowners, to amend. So a board of directors, a rogue board of directors, which happens of, of three or five people, that, that group cannot make a, a decision on short-term rentals for the entire community. Those can only be made through the governing, the recorded governing documents. And so I know there's a kind of long way around to answer your question, but the, the association model allows the representation of the homeowners who are in the community. And if, if, if it's a twenty-year-old set of documents and the current, and all the original owners aren't there, and a new group of owners come in and they want to go one way or the other, that's fine. They just need to get two-thirds of their, of, of all owners or, or ownership percentages to agree and record that, record that change.
Does that answer your question? Any other questions from commissioners? Anything else, Charlie?
Nothing on the list here. And I just wanted to make sure it was clear for the record. Andrew Faverro from Western Weber Planning Commission, that was his question.
Oh, from Andrew. Thank you very much. Michael, thank you very much for that presentation. I think you know that we fully support those private contracts and would encourage all the community associations to, to self-govern and make those decisions that they feel are critical and they take the input from the citizens living in those communities. Think we very much align ourselves with community associations. Thank you very much for taking time with us today, Michael. It's good to see you again.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
Thank you. Okay. Director?
On to Sarah Tolliver. She's going to talk to us about the economic impacts that short-term rentals have on a community.
Welcome, Sarah.
Thank you.
Thanks for your patience for being with us.
Of course. Scroll through Scott's presentation here real quick. Keep going. We've moved along. Um, almost there. Oh, there we go. Okay. I just want to set the stage quickly. As Rick mentioned, I am with Visit Ogden. I know that there tends to be some confusion, especially when we talk about Weber County-related issues, that we are the Tourism Bureau, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, representing all of Weber County, though we brand ourselves as Visit Ogden. Some of the information that I've been asked to provide is going to be a little bit redundant with some of what these other presenters have shown, so I'll move through some of that pretty quickly. But I just wanted to talk about the overall impacts of tourism and the role short-term rentals play in that. So this first graph here, unfortunately, the latest information we have is from 2018. But the Utah Office of Tourism partners with the Kim Gardner Policy Institute at the University of Utah each year to do economic impact studies on tourism across the state. And as part of that, they create these county profiles, is what they call them. This information is available on the travel.utah.gov website for any county in the state. Typically, these reports are released around this time of year for the previous year, but with everything they've been doing to study the impacts of COVID-19, they're a little behind on getting this information available. So I think it still paints a great picture to show you that in 2018, visitors to Weber County spent almost three hundred and sixty-three and a half million dollars in our county that year. And as we go through some of these other slides, you'll see that that has continued to increase over time. This next chart shows, is also on that same website, and shows the breakdown on visitor spending. About ten point eight percent of the spend by our visitors is spent on lodging. The largest percentage of the spend is on gas, followed by restaurants, retail, and then the lodging number. So you can see both the percentage and the actual dollar breakout. And again, these are 2018 numbers, so hopefully we'll have 2019 soon. When we look at that impact on revenues to the county, tax revenues to the county, there's three different taxes that fall under the tourism tax bracket, or it's called TRCC. And that is restaurant tax, short-term leased vehicle tax, and transient room tax. So in, we look at the last five years. In 2015, the total of those three taxes was just over four point nine million dollars. In 2019, we were at just about six point three million dollars, or a twenty-six percent increase over that five-year period. Restaurant tax had a twenty-three percent increase individually. Leased vehicle had a twenty-one percent increase. And transient room tax had a thirty-four percent increase. And a good portion of that is because we did start collecting transient room taxes from our short-term rental properties. So I'll get into that here in a second.
So Sarah, that, that chart you just had, that doesn't represent the percent of increase. That represents the entire amount.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes, for each of those years. So just to set the stage a little bit here to make sure what I'm presenting is understood as in the intent it's meant. The data that I'm going to present is all of Weber County. It's not just unincorporated Weber County. I don't have the ability through my reports to break it down by area. Similar to the presentation earlier, we use a different site, but there is a, there are a couple of organizations out there who provide reporting sites for short-term rental metrics. So in our industry, it's been typical over the years for hotels, branded chain-managed hotels, to report into what's called the STAR report. So they report their occupancy, their average daily rates, their, their availability, and all this information that's reported back to communities. Because we don't have that same mechanism with short-term rentals, similarly to what we heard before, is there are these companies now that go out and basically provide these scraping services to see what rooms are being marketed out there in the short-term rental space. We are looking at only a couple of platforms. Like Scott mentioned before, there are numerous ones out there, but the largest are the ones that are represented here in our reports. So that's Airbnb and Verbo and HomeAway. So they don't represent any property-managed resorts or things that aren't being secured or rented through those platforms. So again, we've covered this. This is one I'll go through. Our reports show January through November of 2018 is Airbnb numbers only. Starting in December of 2018 up to current day, we have the HomeAway and Verbo numbers added into there. And as has been mentioned, there's numerous ways to look at this because, as John mentioned, there could be more than one property that's really available under one listing, and a lot of these properties are also listing on multiple platforms. This chart shows the average occupancy by month over those years. So that might be hard to see for some. So that dark gray line is our 2018 numbers. Blue is 2019 and green is 2020 through the end of June. So you can see that we had a bit of a drop during COVID, but not really. We're following our normal trend line. And this is what's called an adjusted occupancy. So what the reporting platform does is says, if I have my home on a short-term rental platform and I decide that I'm coming to stay this week, so I take it off, it's not counted as available occupancy. So only those rooms that are available today are counted as available occupancy today, if that makes sense. So you'll see there that we typically range between fifteen and about forty-seven percent occupancy, depending on the month, in our short-term rentals.
Question, Sarah? So let's say on a short-term rental, someone rents Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and then Monday, they, it's available, but nobody rents it. Then they rent Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And so do you count the Monday that it was available even though it didn't take?
Yeah, so let's take it on a little bigger. So typically, you look at occupancy on a month, right? So if we have thirty days in the month and it was rented out for a quarter of that time, it would have been occupied twenty-five percent of the time it was available. If it was only available three weeks out of that four weeks of the month, then, do the math quickly for me, it would be whatever that occupancy is.
So Sarah, can you go back to the chart prior to this one?
You would think with all my homeschooling, you'd be up to date on this, right? This one?
Yeah, this one right here. So what is this showing?
Okay, so this goes back to, this is the slide that's probably the most redundant with the information we've shared so far. So if you look at, this is the total number of listings of showing on Airbnb, Verbo, and HomeAway platforms. So in...
Okay, so this just shows the list?
Just total number of listings.
Yeah, and by the year. I had to look at that twice.
It's just so you can see how it's grown over time. And then you'll see the big jump in December of 2018.
But it continued in January. Yeah, you, you took that jump in twenty, you took that jump in December, boy, but then you just stayed strong right there in January, February, March. You just continued to grow. I mean, that, that blue line stays good. And then even, which is surprising to me, is when you get to 2020, we get to COVID in March and April, where you'd think that'd come down, and it's still above 2019. That says something.
And again, remember, yeah, these are, this one doesn't reflect occupancy, but as we see in the next chart, it stayed pretty consistent. But this is the total number of listings that stayed available during COVID.
Well, yeah, so what, in my mind, this represents the number of people who've decided to list their properties now. Mr. Harvey?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so again, this chart is the one that shows occupancy. So if you're looking at COVID timeframes, you know, you can see a bit of a drop of about, what is that, five-ish percent in occupancy in March and April? But then we're following that trend line pretty close from last year, anyway.
Mm-hmm. Got it. Which is, that's a different line. These short-term rentals show a different line than if we were to throw up hotel motels.
Correct. And, and one of the interesting factors, too, for us to consider in Weber County is we actually, you know, as, as a lot of people know, we don't have a lot of hotel rooms in the unincorporated parts of our county. So this is filling the primary demand for lodging. In Weber County, we have just one thousand two hundred and forty-four hotel rooms, which, if you compare that to our neighbors in Davis County, they have around approximately two thousand. Utah County has approximately forty-four hundred. So if you look at our hotel inventory, these short-term rentals are definitely fulfilling lodging demand.
So Sarah, we heard that statewide, the short-term rental market was very strong and it was taking place of some of the hotel rooms because people didn't want to go to hotels right now. They feared it or had concerns about it, whatever. Well, that, that line kind of documents that. It doesn't say why, but it does show the fact that we're up from last year in short-term rentals.
Correct. And so if you look at pre-COVID numbers, sometimes an argument comes up that short-term rentals take away from traditional type of lodging properties regardless of our conditions. And we have seen our hotel occupancies pre-COVID climb each month or stay consistent. They've never dropped since the abundance of short-term rentals has come online. Now, you are right. During COVID, we saw a very dramatic decrease in folks staying in hotels and dropped, we're back up to, we're down about twenty percent in occupancy right now on our hotels. But there, at the end of March and into April, we had dropped about sixty percent occupancy. We were hovering around twenty percent occupancy in the hotels. So...
Thank you.
Okay. This chart is one that I know when I mentioned this in a meeting a while back, made Commissioner Jenkins listen in. So this chart represents the gross revenue of the short-term rental bookings. This is not taxes collected, mind you. This is the gross revenue generated from those short-term rentals. And again, the same caveat with Airbnb during that initial timeframe and then the combined after December 2018. So in 2019, the gross revenue from our short-term rentals was sixteen million four hundred and two thousand two hundred and forty-seven dollars. In 2020, year-to-date, we've seen an eighteen percent increase in occupancy in our short-term rentals. So, or not occupancy, I'm sorry, in gross revenue. We had a very busy winter and we're trending very high on all of our metrics pre-COVID when everything dropped off again. So a lot of that is due to the January, February, and first two weeks of March timeframe, but that is where we are year-to-date. Now, I wanted to bring up that the county has a transient room tax rate of four and a quarter percent. And this is one of the areas, when I talked about on an earlier slide, that those transient room taxes that we've collected have increased so much in the last few years. In Utah, the Utah Legislature formed an agreement with Airbnb to start collecting the transient room tax directly from Airbnb. So if you list your property on the Airbnb platform, you, as the property owner, are no longer responsible to remit the transient room tax. Airbnb does that for you. So it makes it better in some ways because we know we're getting some better compliance, but also makes it trickier because we only get it as an, we only see that as an aggregate and not which properties are reporting which dollar amounts. And then when the legislature passed the marketplace facilitation bill, why everyone pays sales tax on their Amazon purchases now, that also impacted the Verbo and HomeAway platforms. So then they started remitting the transient room taxes collected through their platform as well. So that's why we've seen that big increase in those transient room taxes over that period of time. Okay?
What does it, but still, a person who chooses to rent their home as a short-term rental can rent their home on a Verbo or Airbnb or whatever platform, and then if they have the telephone number, people call them directly and then they kind of, they cheat the system.
There's always ways to cheat the system.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just say it straight up. And, and then there are no, the impact is still there. But there's no tax revenue generated. So that's something we could add on our, our concerns or list of things.
With all the ways to exchange money now, that is something that we hear in the industry as a problem. If you are a host on one of these platforms, your contact information is there. If the host chooses to then, you know, contact you directly and ask you to Venmo or PayPal or somehow direct deposit funds to them circumventing the platform, it is something that they can Not legally, but they can do it. Okay? And that's all. I have my email address here in case there are any questions that come up later on from anyone, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you very much, Sarah. Any questions?
Thank you, Sarah. Great information. That's, those graphs, especially since you've started collecting them, they show some, they show some very interesting trends, especially through this COVID. It's almost hard to believe.
Yeah, it is.
Thank you very much. Hold on a second. Let's see if we have any questions.
We do. We've got one from Planning Commissioner Steve Waldrop from the Ogden Valley Planning Commission.
Oh, brother.
He just wants to test me.
Steve, I'm hitting unmute right now for you.
I want to know who said, "Oh, brother." I can't tell.
Okay, Steve, we're listening to you. Go ahead.
All right, all right. No, I really appreciate this. It's great information. One, one other question, and Sarah, I don't know if this is something that you guys track or if it's something that, that is, needs to be explored elsewhere. You know, as you look at, one of the areas of concern, obviously, is the TRT collection. The other area is on property taxes. You know, if, if we're by, you know, virtue of our number of short-term rentals, we're sort of replacing the hospitality, the traditional hospitality industry, and we're not building hotels, what impact do you think that has on property tax revenue to, to the county and community?
That's a great question. And no, it's not something that we do track on the property tax side. I'm sure it's something we could look into. It's, you know, I think it's very difficult to determine if the presence of these short-term rentals... It's, um, you know, I think it's very difficult to determine if the, um, presence of these short-term rentals is inhibiting the development of hotels or if there are other factors involved in that. And I think it depends on the area. If you look at, um, some of the unincorporated parts of the valley or of Weber County, specifically Ogden Valley, um, there is not a lot of, uh, sentiment to build a hotel property up there currently. And so, but if you look at downtown Ogden, which again is not part of unincorporated Weber County, um, I, we have watched development of hotel properties and increasing occupancy rates across the board. So I don't think the, um, addition of short-term rentals is prohibiting that, um, development.
Okay, and, and one follow-up, and this is probably more for the county's side, is how do we feel we're doing on tracking, um, you know, people who are renting out their homes and, uh, paying, still listing their home as their primary residence and getting the property tax, um, reduced, uh, percentage versus, um, those who are doing it right by listing that as a second home or a non-primary home and paying the full value of property taxes?
Steve, all I can tell you is our county assessor, uh, John Ulliberry, tells me that he has hit the notices sent out, the checking they've done, uh, is about 95% compliant right now for those that are doing it legally. And again, those are his numbers, not mine, but, uh, there was some action taken, you know, a couple of years back, as you remember in the legislature, to give, give the counties more authority and more teeth in, uh, enforcing property tax, uh, payments. Does that answer your question? I don't know that Steve's still there.
Still, Steve?
I'm here, yeah. I didn't know if I was muted or unmuted, am I unmuted? Thank you, that has answered my question.
John Ulliberry does report too that it's, uh, it's, uh, when you send those property tax notices out, if they're not at the same address, then the software system, uh, they, it flagged immediately. So they're having a lot better compliance and so that's still, it's working out very well. Exactly. Hey, thanks, Steve, appreciate you being online with us.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have another Planning Commissioner, um, from the Ogden Valley Planning Commission, Shanna Francis.
Okay.
Shanna, I'm hitting unmute right now on you.
Do you have a question?
Steve, I'm hitting mute on you.
Steve, you may want to mute, yeah.
Hi, thank you for taking my comments. Um, I, I guess mine are, um, to, um, also go along with, on the same, um, track as Steve's. I, the concerns I have are on transparency and, uh, on collecting taxes for short-term rentals. And, um, I'm, you mentioned you have contract with, um, Airbnb, but what about the multitude of others? Um, do you have contract, are they voluntary for them to collect them? Um, so then that would bring the efficiency question up for short-term rentals and tax collection. And then you mentioned, I'm sorry, I'm going to stack a few questions and perhaps you can then, um-
Shanna, is that a question for, is that a-
So you want to go them one at a time?
Is that a question for Sarah? She can answer, I think, for her data.
I, I just want to clarify, when you say, um, a contract with Airbnb, it's not the county or visit Ogden that has that contract with Airbnb. The state of Utah, and it's not a contract, it's, I, I don't even know that I know the right term, but it's an agreement with Airbnb.
Yeah, that, it's with the State Tax Commission, it's policy that they've agreed to?
That went through the whole legislative process. And then, like I said, there are others, so through this marketplace facilitation bill that went through, uh, two, maybe three years ago now, um, the other platforms do have to remit on their own. Um, it's just that that Verbo and HomeAway one, in addition to Airbnb, far and away, um, remit the highest tax values.
Uh, I was reading an interesting article from Economic Policy Institute from 2019 and talked about economic pros and cons and they were just talking about, usually they are a, a voluntary collection type thing. And then there's the issue of the transparency and, and seeing how these are, the taxes are collected, um, where they're coming from and how they are collected and if they are, uh, correlate to what's actually taking place. And, and there again, they're not, they don't cover all of the different platforms on that. So I suppose that's why they were talked about, the efficiency issue on short-term rental tax collection. They also mentioned that, um, a lot of times in communities, they will, um, highlight how much excess revenue is coming into a county or municipality because of short-term rentals and, which looks very appealing. But they quoted that, or stated, uh, their documentation and research shows that only two, uh, two to four percent of people wouldn't go on vacation to that area, um, had there not been a short-term rental. So they highlight the point that most people would still be coming to your community regardless if there were short-term rentals or not. So all that revenue that you're seeing from, um, lodging, gas, restaurants, that would be there. Maybe, um, it could decrease possibly by two to four percent only. Because most people would still come to your community, I thought was very interesting. And then, um, regarding John Ulliberry saying, they think that 95% of the short-term rentals are compliant with the appropriate amount of, uh, property tax that they're playing, paying, that, uh, that's not subsidized. Do we have any ideas of what the percentage are illegal? Do we have any way of finding an, a guesstimate of how many short or illegal short-term there are that aren't paying this, uh, appropriate property tax? Because to me, that's a huge hole.
So Shanna, let's, let me be clear, the 95% deals with primary versus secondary residence. That didn't single out short-term rentals. That was those that, that were claiming primary residency and taking, that were not primary residents taking advantage of the residential exemption. Uh, it didn't have any specific data points on short-term rentals. I don't know, Rick, do we have a, uh-
The only way-
-calculation on what we think is illegal?
The only way we have that is business licenses and unfortunately, right now, it, we're not getting everyone to come in and submit for business licenses and that's part of the enforcement issue.
Yeah, that's, that's the issue, one of the big issues that nobody wants to talk about is the illegals. Shannon, without some type of business license and enforcement provisions, we have no ability to either enforce, uh, unless it violates some ordinance dealing with noise, etc. Uh, but to answer your question, I'm not sure anybody knows, we just know there's a lot out there.
And I, I think that's the efficiency question or issue again too. And then, you know, then you end up possibly having to pay for a private consultant to try to deal with that. Um, whereas if you had, um, people willing to put investments into hotels or condominiums, um, recreational condominiums for short-term rentals, that type of thing. Um, I, I think where, there are a lot, it's a lot easier to enforce and to tax appropriately and to regulate. Um, so the bottom line, um, on there, that article has said that they, the cost actually outweighed the economic benefit. Where lots of times it will look appealing in the beginning, but, um, in the long-term, um, it's usually again a draw. And I just wanted to bring that out, um, in light of all of the information we've been offered this evening. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you, Shanna, for listening and being part of the Planning Commission. Anything else, Charlie?
Nothing here, no.
Thank you, let's go back to Director Grover, is going to give us a summary of those submitted written comments.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner, for ours. So we took the public comments up until five o'clock yesterday, even though we said till 12 o'clock yesterday. And so what we've done is we've compiled that, um, staff has been working furiously trying to read through all those emails that have came to you, that's been forwarded to, um, planning. And so we've calculated that into a spreadsheet. And Scott, if you wouldn't mind just coming up and just going through this percentage and-
Just give us the, kind of the high level, how many opposed, how many in favor, any, any consistent trends?
Yes, so I just want to let everybody know, um, we did, we did receive comments through five o'clock last night and we have spent literally, uh, from last night until 10:00 PM and then this morning, uh, up until about three in the afternoon, reading every single comment, so there's close to 100 pages of written text, um, many, many, many emails. But we did get through all of them, we have read every single comment that's been submitted thus far. And, uh, the high-level comments, what we did is we took everybody's comments and we took out and we, we put a matrix together to see how many individuals had concerns on particular reoccurring topics. And the biggest by far, uh, concern is that the, the community character would be changing. Uh, that they're concerned that by, uh, allowing additional nightly rentals or the, the continuation of nightly rentals is, is changing their community. And that's, that was one of the things that 60% of all the respondents, um, had mentioned. And I should mention, of, of all the individuals who responded, we had 66 total, uh, submissions, 77 actual individual submissions, but a few individuals submitted multiple emails with additional comments. And so there was a pretty, pretty good showing, um, on, on the responses. So by far and away, community character is something that everyone is concerned with. Uh, noise, obviously a high-level concern. And then enforcement, uh, enforcement was from those in the, the opposed camp and those in favor camp. Everybody mentioned enforcement, whether you're opposed or for short-term rentals, we've got to figure out enforcement is what was, was indicated. Uh, parking, parties, safety, traffic speeding, uh, capacity of law enforcement. And then also, you know, interestingly enough, HOAs and the, the autonomy of HOAs was also brought up. Uh, individuals were, uh, both for and against the HOAs having their ability to unself-enforce. Some were concerned that HOAs don't have the manpower. Others thought, you know, we have our own community, we want to do what we want in our own community. Let us use our own community rules to enforce these. So we had people on both sides of the fence with, with regards to HOA comments. Uh, trash, uncollected tax revenue, again, for and against on tax revenue. Everyone wants to make sure that everybody's paying the appropriate amount of taxes, whether you're for or against. Um, occupancy, large gatherings, um, or whether or not, you know, owner occupied is something we should look into, was another one. Um, stressed infrastructure, uh, whether it's roads, sewer septic systems, water capability, trespassing concerns. Uh, property values, we had arguments both in, in favor and against. People believed that, you know, it would be a detriment to their values. Some others believe that it would actually increase their values. Um, absentee owners, fire safety, uh, everyone, you know, we, we saw that, talked about licensing both sides of the camp again. We need to get licensing figured out, everyone who is, is renting needs to be licensed, we can track that better. Um, housing stock, uh, affordable housing availability, uh, competition for existing businesses or rentals. Uh, property rights, again, on both sides of the fence with property rights, you know, I own my property, I want to do what I want with it, or I own my property and I don't want to be affected by what's going on adjacent to me. Uh, so the property rights argument came up several times. Um, you know, obviously, uh, individuals in support of short-term rentals believe that it does support the economy in multiple ways. Um, uh, false realtor advertisements, uh, we have several individuals who are concerned that realtors are miscommunicating where rentals are and aren't, uh, allowed. Um, master plan, I can, inconsistency, property maintenance and inspections, um, again, on both sides of the fence. Um, those who are in favor of short-term rentals are, are very much, uh, in favor due to their ability to supplement their income, uh, or to, uh, somehow subsidize their, their mortgage or to help them reduce foreclosure uh, if they were to, to get into a pickle. They'd like the ability to rent their homes and, and generate that income. And then some of the lesser, uh, mentioned comments, but still important, were, uh, disproportionately dispersed tax revenue. They're concerned that the revenue is generated in one location and spent in another. Uh, dark sky compliance, uh, some people were happy to see short-term rentals as a way of maybe boosting compliance, where we may be able to require licensing, uh, have their property come into compliance with the dark skies. Others were concerned that it would hinder the dark skies with people who come into the community that don't know about that ordinance and how to comply. Um, additional lodging options, underserved, uh, lodging, individuals, uh, want to see more options in the area. Um, complaint resolution, how do we resolve complaints, again, because to enforcement as well. Um, we have several individuals who are in support, but obviously wanted to see appropriate restrictions and regulations for those rentals. Uh, we had individuals concerned about intoxication and drugs, no removal, property maintenance. Uh, we had several individuals mentioned a, a minimum length of stay and that, again, that's on both sides of the fence. Uh, those who are opposed and those in favor want to make sure that, you know, if, if something is allowed, the minimum length of stays is something we look into. Um, privacy, uh, they want to make sure we're capturing business and we're not losing it to other markets, you know, in Utah or other communities, other mountain communities. Um, uh, some of these are, are kind of re-mentions where we've talked about them again, but we took all of these responses and we tried to make sure we understood who was, who was in favor, who was opposed. And there was a significant amount who wanted to see, as mentioned before, that we, we just straight up banned. We had several individuals who wanted to, to see that opened up. So again, both sides of the fence were submitted. We have received a few comments just today that we've had to let them know, we'll review their comments and, and review them at a future meeting. But that, this is a summary of what we've received thus far. Does that have any questions?
Thank you very much. Questions?
A lot of work here, there's, that's, you did a great job there.
No, it was, it was good to read through and get a, an idea of what, what people's concerns are.
You know, and I appreciate the fact, every email, every single email that we either got collectively or individually, I know I forwarded to you, Mr. Perks, and I copied you on. And so you have, you got a lot to read.
We did, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, great job, that was a lot of work in a short period of time.
Sure.
Yep. Okay, anything else? Charlie?
It's actually nothing over here, uh, but I've got a comment myself as well. Scott has been-
Go ahead.
Really heating up the, uh, the keyboard, trying to get things taken care of and that's, that's been fantastic. As we were looking through the different comments, we were trying to figure out the best way to present it. Honestly, we want to take as, as neutral and, and objective of a, of a stance as we can as staff, help you get the facts and help you make a policy decision at the end of the, end of the day. And so, um, even though there were quite a few more folks who were opposed to allowing this, uh, just opened up across the valley, um, there were a number of folks who said, "These are the reasons why." And so as we categorize this, as Scott put them into their categories, um, we really wanted to hit, hit home that there are key topics to resolve. Um, maybe we could, they can be resolved, maybe they can't be resolved, but, uh, taking kind of an objective stance on that, um, and, and flushing out what, you know, needs to be addressed as we're, as we're moving through whatever we choose to do in the end run.
Thank you, Charlie, I think we, I think we'd all agree, this is not a easy answer. We can see that there's two sides to this question and it's, uh, going to be a, uh, work of progress as we move forward to make the decision that's, uh, hopefully it's a win-win for everybody, uh, in the future. So Director, any final comments or where would you like to go from here?
Um, what I'd like to do is just have some comments dialogue between you and the Planning Commissioners. And after you've had these presentations and you've heard the public comment, we haven't heard it, but you've saw the percentage and their concerns. And that way we can have some feedback on direction, on where you as the Commission and the Planning Commission would like to go. And then we have some projected time dates that we'd like to throw out there for you to consider, um, for next meetings. Um, and this is more with the Planning Commission, we'd like to, um, now bring it back to the Planning Commission. And then in those meetings and the work session meetings that we have, we'd like to get more public comment. Um, so it's just not in writing, so we get more verbal comment back from them. And then also we can take some of these key issues that we see here and look at ways in which we can implement that into, um, possible scenarios where we can help eliminate some of the concerns that we're having up in the valley. Um, I, you know, as- I, you know, as I mentioned in the beginning, enforcement, parking and partying are some of the biggest issues, but there's other things, too. You have noise that's out there, which coincides with partying. And enforcement, if we're able to adequately enforce this issue, and how do we do that? Whether it's, you know, with code enforcement internally with Weber County, or as we've listened to this individual talk about, a third party coming in and looking at that. And so these are things that we want to hone down on in work session meetings and then come back and look at if, you know, there's a flavor to look at amending the ordinance, and then if there is, then bring that ordinance recommendation back to you as a Commission to look at considering, which we'll be dealing with public hearings.
Perfect. So the next step would be to turn this over to both the Planning Commissions.
Correct.
Let them have public comment at that point in time. I'm assuming individually, or are you going to work, do that as a joint session? What's your plan?
Well, Scott, why don't we go up to the slide of the calendar on potential next steps? And let me just step you through this.
Yeah, please do.
If you could just mirror that. So what we're thinking is that the Ogden Valley and Western Weber Planning Commission meet during each month. And what we're thinking is the next meeting that we have with Western Weber, we talk about short-term rentals in a work session meeting there. And then we have a work session meeting at the end of the month with the Ogden Valley Planning Commission, which would be on August 25th. And then looking at another joint work session, possibly on the 1st of September. And we thought that would be a good date because when we looked at Labor Day, it falls on the 7th, so this is before that time. And then the next meeting, we could possibly look at some type of public hearing with the Ogden Valley and then with the Western Weber in October. And so those are some tentative dates that we just wanted to throw out, get some comments back from you as a Commission and also from the Planning Commission on those dates. I know it's, it's a bit aggressive, and I know that most likely, you know, there's going to be other work sessions that pop in there, too, but this would kind of be the best-case scenario to look at that. But obviously, it's not something we want to rush, we want to make sure it's done right, but we also want to be sensitive to the impact that it's having on the community because of lack of enforcement. And right now, I can tell you with Iris and one code enforcement officer, all she is able to do is being able to get to reactionary planning, reactionary enforcement, excuse me. And so when we have complaints, she's able to get out and work on those, but to be proactive with one person, we just can't do that.
Right. Yeah. So I think we all understand this is an issue, it's a problem that needs to be solved. It's not going to be solved immediately, but we're going to put this in the hands of the Planning Commission to come up with regulation and enforcement that makes sense, that will obviously make a difference as we look at these communities and deal with the issues you brought up, parking, noise, everything else, garbage, etc. So that's where we're headed. With anything else? And then I'm assuming that this will be, the schedules will be posted online, we'll know what those are?
Yeah, they will be scheduled and posted online, so as the public, look at those schedules. It will be on our website, and then we'll also make sure that we work with Sasha internally with our PR and just make sure that we get that out on social media so that it's addressed. And then we also have some focus groups up in the Ogden Valley that we've been working with, letting them know that they send that out to their platform folks as well.
Right. Yeah, so this is going to be a transparent process as we go forward. Everybody that has and wants to have a voice in this will be heard. This is not going to be a rushed issue, but we do, we do want, at the same time, want to make sure this goes forward in a consistent manner, because if we don't deal with this, then it's going to deal with us. And we'll just deal with the results, which we don't want to have happen, because the results aren't promising at the end of the day. With that, thank you very much, Scott. Let's have a final, anything from Chair Edwards or Chair Lewis you'd like to add? John? And let me thank the Chairs for being here with us. Hopefully that this gave you somewhat of a direction, some additional information that you can take forward with you to the other Planning Commissioners as we move forward with this process.
Yes, certainly. So I guess my, my last little comment would be that as we go forward now, trying to elicit information from our communities, you know, what's, what we're going to get is a bunch of, here's what's not working, here's what's falling apart, here's what's too loud. And so we'll very easily collect what's not going well. Tonight, we heard some great presentations, you know, from the county, and they're great at collecting information like that. And I think as a, as a Planning Commission, what we could really use here is some input as to what did work, what were some solutions. And, you know, I, I think there's something like 3,100 counties out there in this United States. There's got to be counties ahead of us who have already had this discussion, already had some of these solutions. So I guess my proposal would be while we're collecting this information, what about some effort from the county going into, okay, well, here's 10 things that were common among the counties that have already addressed this or started to. Here's what worked for them, here's what didn't work. Enforcement was great, but they had to do it this way, or they third-partied it, or, you know, here's how they addressed, you know, their solutions, rather than us start from scratch. There's got to be some solutions out there we can find first, or at the same time, so...
No, absolutely. That's already been done, and a lot of that's in progress. We know we have consultants across, so Rick has that information. We already know what the issues are. I think that's pretty well been determined. I don't think we have to ask a lot more questions, we know what they are. What we have to look for here is solutions, how we take the information from Montana, from Idaho, from Colorado, that's already, we're not, we're not the only ones going through this. In fact, there's hundreds of other communities, cities, etc., that have faced this same issue that have solved it.
Yeah.
The, you know, what we're faced with is it's going to be tough decisions, we'll have to make some tough decisions to solve it. We know maintaining the status quo is not the answer.
Yeah, it's not working, and we do appreciate you guys addressing it, and we look forward to hearing some of the solutions already out there.
Yeah. Thank you, John. Thank you, Brandon. Appreciate...
Mr. Chairman.
Planning Commission members, we appreciate your efforts. And let me say this, I think we as a Commission have full faith in your ability to analyze it and come up with the solutions that make sense for Weber County. And that's what we're looking for. Charlie?
If I might, the slideshows that, that you saw here, they're a little bit grainy, a little bit blurry to see. I wouldn't fault anyone at home if they had a hard time following some of the details. They are uploaded to Weber County's project management tracking software, which is called Frontier. So if you were just to Google Weber County Frontier, you'd go right to it. In the search bar, just search short-term rentals. Oh, and it's actually, it's on the agenda. So you could just click the link, it's right on the agenda, it'll take you right to it, and you'll get some high-resolution graphics there from the presentations you saw. Also, we have thousands upon thousands of pages of solutions, so we're happy to send those over to the Planning Commission for review.
You're going to have plenty of solutions to read through and find, find out what's best, so... Yeah. Don't, don't worry about that, John. You don't have to reinvent the wheel, you just have to pick the best part of that wheel and decide what works for us. Okay, anything else, Director?
No, I just want to thank my staff for what they've been doing, collecting all the data. And in the next work session meetings, we're going to be going over pages and pages of documents that we've received from other communities, what's worked for them, what hasn't worked for them, and look at those things, and then you can look at those as well, so we're not reinventing the wheel. You know, even a local community right next to us, it's part of Weber County, Ogden City, you know, they've looked at some things that way, but they've also put in things in place that has distance requirements. And, you know, do we want to go that way? Do we not want to go that way? They have some enforcement issues that they have to look at because they're doing it internally, they're not looking at a third party reviewing it. And so there's some enforcement issues that they're dealing with. And so, you know, I think if we look at all these different communities and take a hybrid of what we feel works best for our community, and when we look at our community, we're going to have different dynamics. In Western Weber, there's different dynamics versus the Ogden Valley when we start looking at short-term rentals. And so we're going to have to look at those things, and how do we blend that all together and, and come up with a solution that will work for the county. And so we, staff has been working on this for probably about the last six to seven months, and they've been putting in a lot of time looking at all these things. So buckle up.
Buckle up and hold on. Let me just thank those people that attended this meeting in person, we appreciate you being here. The comments you made online, and you'll have the ability to make those in person in the very near future, we take very seriously. We want those comments. For those people listening online to our Zoom meeting, thank you for being with us. Again, this is a transparent process. Your perspective, your issues that you bring forward will be listened to and taken into account. We would ask one thing, and that's that rather than just offer a complaint, please give us a solution. I've always said, if you're going to complain, then please have a solution that works better. We're willing to listen. What we're looking for here, folks, we know the complaints, we know the problems, what we're looking for is a solution. That's what we want to have. And so please, take your time to correspond, to communicate with us, but I'd ask you, besides your complaint, feel free to complain, offer a solution to that complaint if you wouldn't mind. I think that's what's going to get us to the finish line. Thank you very much for being here, fellow Commissioners, thank you. Rick, let me just thank your staff again, they've done a great job, Charlie, Scott, beyond the call of duty again for the county. Commissioners? Anything else? Commissioner Jenkins, thank you very much, and thanks for being here. We'll see you shortly at the next Planning Commission meeting.